Meeting for order. Stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, three point O is to approve the meeting agenda.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye, those opposed? Agenda is approved. Alright, four point O are acknowledgements and recognitions. We don't have anything on the docket for that this evening. Uh, five point O are recognition of visitors and community comments. Community comments is an opportunity for the public to address the school board on an item included in this agenda in accordance with the guidelines printed at the end of the agenda. Um, no community comments. Uh, signed up for this evening, but just wanted to recognize our visitors in the room. Uh, welcome. Thanks for being here and welcome to all of you out in cyberspace, either joining us live or in the future. Thanks for being here. Alright, uh, six point O are reports. Six point one is a principal's report. No, no report tonight or did you ad lib something?
Uh, I mean, nothing new. We're, we got all of our teachers hired and um, yeah, it's been pretty quiet here the last few weeks, which is nice. And we'll start picking up in a couple of weeks, so yeah.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you. Um, okay, six point two is the superintendent report. Mr. Lindholm.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I want to just highlight a few things. Uh, first of all, the communications team for the twenty twenty five referendum uh, is now in kind of full swing, uh, so. Uh, they provided material for our annual newsletter that'll go out around August, uh, first week of August. Uh, and then I expect the Vikingsvision.org site to be relaunched around July thirtieth or August first. Um, so look for that and then please be spreading the word about uh, that Vikingsvision.org site being that key place for. Um, content and information. Um, I've been asked a little bit about uh, the impact of the uh, federal funding. Uh, suspension or holdback uh, that we've uh, heard about. Uh, and um, in case you get asked the question in FY twenty sixth coming here, that might impact us between twenty five to fifty-ish thousand dollars. Depending on exactly what gets held back. It's not an enormous thing. If it was, say, Title One Part A, that would be huge. That would be a hundred and some thousand dollars, but um, what has been held back is pretty small as it pertains to Cook County schools. So it's somewhere in the twenty-five to fifty-five thousand dollar range. Um, and we just don't know what, when those funds will be released. We'll have to just stay tuned for that. And then I want to end with a really big celebration. I got a text this morning from. Uh, Jeff Anderson, I had to think of his first name, Jeff Anderson from the Costin Group. And indeed, Cook County Schools' grant uh, application was recommend, is going to be recommended in the legislation in the fall. So we're ninety-nine point nine percent sure that we got the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar LCCMR grant. Uh, which is for outdoor uh, learning spaces. Um, so stay tuned to that. That'll be an exciting uh, win. Um, I feel very, very blessed uh, by the decision the board made to work with the Costin Group. I mean, it's, it's materialized into five million dollars from the RRP and two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from LCCMR. Uh, so wise, wise investment. Kudos to the board for that. Uh, yeah, it's a celebration. All I got.
Fantastic. Any questions from anybody? Alright, we'll move on to this uh, consent agenda with seven point O. Um, anything need to be pulled for further discussion? Not, we just need a moment.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as proposed.
I'll second it.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye, those opposed? Consent agenda is adopted. Alright, eight point O are discussion and action items. Eight point one is to accept the expenditure and revenue report for June of twenty twenty five. Um, linked up in the packet.
Yeah, and I can share looking in your packet. Now, this is the last um, fiscal. Twenty-five treasurer's report because it's the end of June. However, note that things will move quite a bit yet between now and when books close out. Which is around audit time. Uh, so it looks, you know, overall like revenues are way ahead of expenditures, but we do know we have. Expenditures yet to hit books that will um, be coming as well as revenues. So um, and then at the very end of the tie out. You can see like, for example, transportation under revenue says three point six percent. That's because now. Uh, Teresa has to down and move all the funds from where they are now to where they're supposed to be as they tie out the end of the year. So goodness is, it's a, it's a balanced or, or at least maybe even black a bit. So who goes to Teresa on the board?
Okay, yeah, thank you. Alright, uh, so we just need a motion to accept the expenditure revenue report for June twenty twenty five.
Yes, I'll say something back.
Okay, further discussion? All in favor? Aye, those opposed? Motion carries. Eight point two is to approve the resolution to designate the Iowa. Is also linked up in the packet. This is an annual affair.
Uh, Quinn, maybe for your perspective, um, this is giving me the authority to give everyone else. Access to different pieces of the MDE's technology portals. So it's in, in every district, it's the superintendent backed up usually by. Uh, in my case, Kate.
Yeah, the individual identified official's authority. You know, you'd think in Minnesota, they could come up with an acronym that wasn't Iowa. And there's no changes in this, in how we've operated this in years past. Okay. Alright, so then we just need a motion uh, to approve this annual designation.
Some motion too.
Oh.
Dang, Tygo's surrender.
And a second from Carrie? Any further discussion? All is in favor? Aye, those opposed? Motion carries. Eight point three is to approve the student activities handbook for twenty twenty five.
Uh, last month, Stephen Anderson was here to kind of walk through the, the why of this and uh, his thinking around it. So you heard that. Uh, and then the only thing that changed uh, since last month. Was the parts about the booster club at the very end. Uh, I wanted to make sure we articulated that booster clubs don't fund personnel. Uh, and that's my opinion and I wanted that in there because um, if, if people are going to be coaches, they're going to be our employees. And we have authority over them. We don't necessarily want certain clubs doing that, but everything else is the same as what you saw a month ago.
This is a new?
This is a new, a new handbook altogether, Carrie. Uh, and Stephen, as the new AD was. He wants some structure and some.
Yeah, yeah, he presented at the work session and it was.
Yeah, you're right. It was the work session.
I was there, that was cool.
So yeah, it's a new one and um.
It's a, it's a nice structure approach to the whole ID, AD picture.
For sure.
That we haven't seen before.
Any major highlights we should?
Well, formalizes the lettering process, so that's all spelled out for all the sports, which maybe. It just makes it crystal clear, you know, in policy, policy here. It gives expect, you know, some of the things that personally that I'll appreciate about it is it just gives like expectations kind of across the board. It gives expect, expectations to students.
And coaches.
And coaches and parents, you know, and just in terms of like how they should be comporting themselves. What's the grievance process, those sorts of things. So it just helps kind of tighten up, you know, things that come up, you know, in a way they can be handled sort of consistently.
And full disclosure, he, he lifted this from another district. He knows, he knows the AD, so he was able to steal a lot of it.
That's great.
Yeah.
Document. It's very thorough.
Very thorough, yeah.
I like that, you know, there's like basically job descriptions for coaches and stuff too. It's not just somebody walking out there doing whatever they want.
I like it. Wait for Steve.
Yeah, exactly.
Alright, so um, yeah, any additional questions, but also if, if now we just need a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the um, student activities handbook.
I'll second. Uh, any further discussion?
Let's have one, one comment and maybe this isn't the right spot for it, but one of our coaches, uh, Plamen Dimitrov. Just uh, one assistant coach of the year across all sports for high school. Um, I told you that.
Yes, you did.
You know that, right? Plamen, um, who's our, one of our downhill ski coaches for the state. The assistant coach of the year across all sports for the Minnesota High School Sports League. And um, that's pretty exciting.
For sure.
To have that quality and recognition of one of our coaches. Somehow it fit into this. I'm sorry, just reminding you.
Well, that's alright, yeah. Yeah, congratulations. They have, that's amazing. Any other discussion? Yeah, I would just extend my gratitude to Mr. Anderson for pulling this together and looking forward to. Ha, helping shape our, our athletics and activities going forward. All those in favor? Aye, aye, those opposed? Motion carries. Alright, eight point four is to approve the Cook County Middle School slash Cook County High School Student Handbook. And we've got Principal Blonge here.
Um, I believe you all have linked in the.
Yep, yep.
And so what I did is I just uh, highlighted in yellow um, any changes that I am proposing for the handbook for this coming school year. Um, and I, I don't know if you had a chance to look through this, want to ask specific questions, or if we just want to cruise. Through it together and highlight some things.
Yeah, let's cruise through it together.
Okay, um, so just defining parking, that's, it's not a big deal, but it just. Makes it easier when kids say, I didn't know that. Uh, we're just really spelling it out for them where they can park during the school, school day and where, where they can't. Um, I did take out uh, there, this is old language from before I even got here. That we implement a positive behavioral intervention and support system in the middle school and high school. And it's not a terrible thing. We really don't. And so I'm just being more accurate with the language. Um, uh, we do do that in the elementary school, but we don't really implement that kind of a model in the school and high school currently. Um, and so just taking that out, so it's more accurate. Uh, the handbook still referenced after-school detention. We, we don't implement after-school detention. What we do in place of that is during the um, lunch advisory time, there's an hour there that kids have. Like they're in the resource room, working on a positive behavior plan to um, reflect on their behaviors, that type of thing. So we don't, we don't do the after-school detention that kind of is taking place. So I took that language out, um, where it said after-school detention. Um, the big things. That I, that were added in, let me, is uh, in regards to online schooling. So last year, we had a, a lot of students elect to take classes that they could have taken in person. I'm taking them, taking them online and instead. And they can do that. They can choose to do that. We can't stop them from doing that. Um, the handbook uh, used to say that if you do take an online class, you have to stay in school. Well, we, we are getting more and more kids, and this is happening in schools all over the place too, not just here in Cook County. Uh, because online schooling is becoming such a prevalent thing now and uh, more and more kids are doing it. Well, what's happening is that it's flooding our um, library and study halls because that's typically where you would house kids who are doing online schools. Um, for that class period. So if the kid would normally be in algebra. Uh, and they want to take it online, um, they can take an online class through an online school and get that credit. But it doesn't necessarily mean that they're being taught online during our second period class period where all the other kids are getting algebra, if that makes sense. So what has happened is we've housed them in the library and like in where the kids who have taken study hall are. Um, and it's just becoming unmanageable. Um, and, and as you can imagine too, if kids aren't actually engaged in classes during that class time. They don't have anything to do, then it's a behavior management thing, that type of stuff. So one of the things that I'm proposing is that if you are choosing to take online classes. Then um, most, like, most of our PSL students do this now. They leave campus. Um, and then they come back to campus then for third hour, fourth hour, whatever their other scheduled classes are. Um, but that is a, that's a kind of a big change that I'm proposing in this handbook is that students who are choosing to take online classes. Um.
That are not PSL.
That are not PSL, uh, because yes, PSL, we have to provide them spaces. Um, students choosing to take online classes, you just have to provide them the regular technology that all the other kids have. Access to lunch and then access to any like special education services, that type of stuff.
So kids are supposed to leave campus when they're taking a class online and then come back? What if the kid lives far away?
They can go to, you know, Java moves, they can go, I mean. Uh, that, that is one of the things that we're trying to have conversations with families like, like online school. It's not always the, the best thing. Like there are different factors involved when you talk online school. And it's just, it really, last year was really challenging to manage the amount of students who are choosing to take different classes online.
I'm just wondering, because just today I got an email from a parent about this. So I should probably forward that to you.
I.
We understand all of it.
Yeah, well, so the, as I understand it, if, if a student is, so basically they're, they now have a gap in their schedule. They're not completing like a full day's schedule, right? Because they're opting out of this class, so they're just whole there.
Correct.
Um, and the district isn't getting funding for like a full-time student as a result. Of them opting out. So there's some of the things at play there. And how does this reconcile with like the open, like the closed campus?
Well, we, we don't have a closed campus.
Good.
Current seniors.
What's that? Juniors and seniors.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, and so. Yeah, what, we're currently right now, like during advisory, some of our freshmen. Um, will choose to go to some of the local churches for lunch and that type of stuff. And there's a permission form that parents, you know, fill out on Wednesdays or for, for that time. I mean, they call their kids out. If kids are in online classes, that'd just be something that we would have a form that signs out that says my kid can check out. And they check out at the main office when they leave. And then when they come back, they check back in and be left back in the school.
One thing I want to point out that is part of this and it's everywhere, it's not just Cook County is. Uh, we've, we've come to the time when um, little Johnny doesn't like Mrs. Jansen. And so they just go to an online class and they're not going to take class from Mrs. Jansen because they just don't like it. And uh, part of this is trying to get rid of that. Like, come on, learn how to work with people you're different from.
And to Dan's point, then we, yes, they are our student all the time, but they're not our student for that online class. So expecting, the expectation that we provide adult supervision and all these things. It's interesting, sort of a can of worms that this could go any direction. I'm sort of curious to see what.
It started with PSL and with PSL, it was never really a behavior problem because the PSL kids are usually top-notch kids, right? You're speaking college classes. But when you get an eighth grader that's like, I don't like Mrs. Jansen, I'm going to take my algebra class online. And now you're dealing with a whole different, that's a whole different element.
And this is specific to high school students, um, this new policy. We do have middle school students who elect to take um, online alternatives and we wouldn't be necessarily sending them out of the building for those classes. But yeah, yeah. So that, any other, any other questions on that?
Do you have a, um, just as the other, you mentioned other districts are grappling with, with this issue? Um, is this, are there examples of other districts using this strategy?
This is an example. There's, I've also heard of other districts who say, okay, you can, you can take that math class online. But then you're still going to be in the room that.
In the classroom.
The classroom math teacher is teaching during that time because that's where you would be in that, like, we're not. It, it, like, to put all the kids, there's more and more kids who is to put them all in a room, like, it's just be, it's hard to manage. So schools are doing it different ways. Those are two examples.
Is there a way to engineer a schedule so that they don't have a hole?
So that, we try to as best we can, yes. So that, um, Kelly, our counselor, when she's making the schedule. But that, I mean, that's limited too. Like, we can't do it for everybody. Um, she's tried to do that with PSL. Um, and is trying to do that with students who did elect to take online classes as well, yes.
I'm super interested in this. I think that Rena's probably the first of many messages we're going to receive with. Interest in this. I, I, I understand based on the information you've presented why this is being done.
Yeah, I think this is, um, this person is saying, um, she would help, appreciate help and understanding the issue. And why was it made public that these changes have occurred?
So the.
I am just thinking that we should be a little proactive about communication and how we're doing this before it becomes a bigger issue. I'm not being critical. I'm just saying, let's, you know, maybe, we've seen this before where we rolled something out.
Yep, yep.
And had an issue later.
So this, there was language around this included in like the course registration guide that this may be coming. So that was, like, people were informed during course registration because we did want to give that heads up. Um, to that point, yes. So that wasn't the course registration guide that all the kids had. Yeah, yep.
Well, I mean, it's, I think it's an interesting approach because it, it sort of makes, you know, it's sort of like. It clarifies the decision that you're making, right?
Right.
Um, and if that's, that's part of the, the decision that you want to opt into, then that's kind of what you have to manage.
And then.
That's fair enough. We couldn't, can people like at this point now that perhaps it's going to become.
Change schedule?
Yeah, they'd be able to kind of like revert back, yeah.
We, um, student schedules haven't been, they'll, we'll send those out uh, in a couple, few weeks maybe. Um, towards the beginning of August. And then there is a window there where schedule changes can be made with Ms. Kytovich and that type of stuff. So if people wanted to elect out of the online and be in person, they can certainly do that.
Interesting.
I'm curious about how, how prevalent is.
Um, I don't have the, I don't have the exact number for you, but I do know that, like, in our library, which is our study hall. There were times where we didn't have chairs for kids in there this year.
Well, how many kids is that?
Um, pushing twenty-five, yeah. Because that's also where students who have signed up for a study hall, like, that's the study hall space. So.
Super fascinating. I think it's gonna, I think we're going to hear from a few people because I feel like parents are like, well, I'm upset with a choice or something. I'm going to take my kid out of this class.
Yep.
And in the past, that means their class, their student goes to the library.
Yep.
I bet it will feel like a perceived loss of freedom. Because I imagine a lot of parents are like, but I don't want my kid just roaming around town with their pro box.
Yeah, and I think, you know, fifteen years ago, this didn't exist, right? Didn't exist at all. If you, if you enrolled in a different class at a school across the street, you went to the school across the street.
Yeah.
So these, these people have chosen to enroll in another, a different school. So we're just saying, take your different school and go there. Don't, don't stay here under our purges.
Yeah, that's the, actually seems really clear to me as a way to explain it. Basically that, like, you are in a different school for that class.
Correct.
You can't, you don't receive its benefits and facilities of that school.
Yep, and you have funding for you is at that school.
Well, maybe this is an opportunity for the library or Cook County higher ed or something to help.
Like this, for sure.
But it will probably also dis, disincentivize.
Or just take the class from the teacher that you need to learn how to get along.
Right? Because then even if higher ed does something. Somebody needs to, in theory, at minimum, they're checking out a room, right? You can reserve a room, but. You don't want maybe twenty-five students coming in.
Well, they'll have their own expectations for how they manage their program.
Yeah, I think it's gonna be, I, I understand. So I can approve this, but I'm just interested in.
There'll be some.
Like the backlash will be.
There'll be some kickback.
Um, the other kind of addition of note, that's a, a bigger deal. Um, on page thirty-five, I included, um, it's called a, it's titled harassment assessment. And so, um, a lot of times in schools today, like, there, there is bullying and harassing in every school. Um, and so how schools define that and work through that, I wanted to include a more clear tool to really describe the different types of and levels of. Harassment that occur in school, um, because it helps to facilitate like meaningful conversation with young people. Um, to try to get them to. Understand uh, like behaviors and expectations and that type of stuff. So on page thirty-five, it kind of breaks down um, different levels of harassment and where that then would have fit into our. Kind of consequence category. And basically what it means is that uh, in that level one, level two category. Um, it's, it's words or phrases or language that's being used that isn't appropriate, but isn't necessarily directed at a person. Um, and then from, from there, it increases in severity as the direction or repetitiveness. Towards somebody, um, intention towards a specific person, um, also increases. And so, um, that table is new into our handbook and it's something that, um, Ms. Lakowski and I. Found ourselves, find ourselves working through a lot more, um, with kids. Um, and so it just, I, I felt it would be helpful to have that clearly stated in our handbook. How we define harassment, um, in our school and what are our central consequences for it.
Can I only ask one more question? And I think it's on page eighteen.
Sure.
It says something about parents can bring their lunch and eat with their school, isn't it?
Well, so we, okay, yeah, I, I took that, we, we haven't done that. We do special lunches with parents and families where we invite them in. And so, um, it hasn't, I, we haven't ever had a parent come in and. I don't know how, to be honest, like, if, if that did happen, I don't know.
They can even buy a lunch, huh?
What's that?
They can even buy a lunch if they want to, I would think, couldn't they?
Well, well, that's, it, it's more of like access to other kids. I, I've been in situations before where, like. People coming into school for.
Cause issues with other.
Yeah. And so it's not something that we've ever, in two years that I've had, um, and somebody do. And I, I see that as a potential for issues to happen, which I have seen in other schools that I've been in. With families and people coming into school and.
It just seems like such a, even if parents aren't practicing, it just feels like such a sort of goodwill. Like, if you want to eat lunch with your kid, you're welcome to. It's interesting.
And I, this is, this is the, you've made language, so striking it out doesn't mean. That this, now it's just mute to the point, right? Like.
It doesn't mention it.
At all.
It just seems so welcoming to take the wave.
Well, and again, we do, we have, we do have like designated special lunches where we bring the families in and welcome them.
At the middle school, high school level, and this is the middle school, high school hand.
Right, that's true, yeah.
So it just seems sweet, like, oh, if I wanted, I want to come have lunch with Burke or Luke, I could. They'd hate it. They'd be so embarrassed.
And, and you, and you could take them to lunch if you wanted to.
So it's the access to other kids that were.
That's, that's where I, I look at it and, and it hasn't happened here, but I have been in schools where that situation like that had popped up.
So if there's a potential for abuse here, um, because it's like spelled out here, well, I can do this. It's in the handbook. But this is, but by striking it, it doesn't mean that you can't do it. It just means that.
We, we may say, no.
Just, right?
It's just not there. It just works so well.
This was just requested by like high school kids, right?
Definitely middle school. Help me off a block away.
Please don't.
Um, and yeah, and there, like I said, I highlighted everything in yellow and so if you want to take more time and. But a lot of it was just like our cell phone policy, just redefining how we hold kids accountable to defining that more, not redefining it. But, uh, things like that. I think I highlighted the, the big, big things.
Well, I appreciate the, the format here. It made it easy to review, so thank you for, for.
Like, you can't help it when I think about it, like a child still.
Um, well, that's, it's okay. You go for it, Carrie.
Our school song is titled Illinois Loyalty. I didn't know that.
Well, it's the, a lot of school songs have, a lot of high school songs cop, copy. The, the major schools. And so I think maybe that's.
It's probably the tune.
To that school, yeah.
Yeah, huh. Yeah, huh. Interesting.
Yeah, there's like, there's like twenty different like school songs.
Right, yeah.
That are used as fight songs.
We're gonna start singing this song at the beginning of all of our school board, right?
Well, I mean.
So.
I really could.
I don't know how many people.
When I was growing up.
I I know, when I was in high school, it was a big deal too. I don't, it's in a lot of schools.
We also used to do pep rallies like.
Yeah.
Pretty consistently.
Yep.
And now maybe we do one for homecoming? Is that true? Do we do them all anymore?
We don't, we don't do many pet festivals.
Or unless it's like someone's going to state or something in particular.
But we, that's that's a different.
All right, any other questions or comments for Josh on the handbook here? Um, and we're looking for an approval on this tonight. Yep, okay.
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve the student handbook, knowing that people like. Have concerns with some things.
Oh, second. Further discussion?
I'll just point out that we'll have probably the staff handbook and a preschool handbook in August. They just weren't quite ready for tonight.
And when will these be sent out to families? This.
In the ball.
This one right here.
So when we start, uh in the first like two weeks of school, Ms. Kytovich and I, we meet with every grade during advisory on different days. And so. Through that process, this is delivered. Expectation is you review it. There's a signature page there to return.
So one one further clarification, I'm gonna have to answer the signal. Is this just high school?
This is just middle and high school.
I know, but kids that are taking online classes in middle school, they also.
No, they don't.
Specifically say that in the wording?
Well, let's verify. I I intended it to be. Um, I.
Cause certainly if we're talking juniors and seniors.
The intent is for high to to be for just high school students, so.
Yeah, we.
What page is that?
It was early on.
High school students, yes, yeah.
High school, juniors and seniors or any?
High school students.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that would include.
That would include ninth and tenth grade.
Okay, so fourteen-year-old.
Good.
Uh, cause that gets back to Dan's question about open campus for juniors and seniors.
Right?
Did you, sorry, did you ask this specific question about that or?
Because open, open campus is just for juniors and seniors.
Currently during for lunch.
Yeah, okay.
There's open campus for juniors and seniors.
The other mechanism, so the mechanism for this is it's not the lunch exception. It's the like they would have a permission slip or something like I said.
Well, the parents allowing them to do online courses.
Yeah, that, yeah.
And so will you be uh having some sort of communication?
Oh, yeah.
With every family that has someone currently planning to do an online. Course.
Yes.
If not, preferably even more families, but specifically fit.
Sure.
Like I see that your your son or daughters. Uh, sign up for an online course. And I want you to be aware that we have had a policy change. Your child is not a Cook County School student.
During this time.
Timeframe and thus will be expected to leave campus or something to that fact, right? Um, because it's important to be able to, when you get an email like that, say, oh, well, it was, it was. Told to students at registration and we've reached out to families to make sure that they're aware. Uh. I just think the transparency uh and making it not feel like a surprise. If people don't open their email and read it, which sometimes I'm guilty of that, that's their own fault. But if we have a communication, I think that's really.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Eight point five is to approve the Sawtooth Elementary student.
Again, very minor changes to that one, I think. Um, the one uh Sawtooth, there's no personal technology use allowed at all in middle school and high school. They can have it during lunch, during passing time, but they can't have it during class time. The one change I did make is that the Sawtooth handbook said, starting at eight o'clock, and I just bumped that up to seven forty-five, which just means. When they get off the bus at school until three fifteen, when they get on the bus, they're not to use personal technology at school in the elementary school. Um, I took out computer lab. We don't have a computer lab. I struck that from some language there. Um, other than that, there wasn't any. Real changes of significance to Sawtooth.
My household.
Personal technology.
That my students, my kids don't have cell phones.
Yeah.
When they would read this, like, see, mom, I'll be after kids.
You do mine, so it's good for parents to touch and develop.
So I guess I lied. My sixteen-year-old has a cellphone. Rest of it.
All right, any any questions for? For Principal Belangi on this one? If not, we just make motions.
I'm making a motion to approve Sawtooth Student Handbook as opposed.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries.
All right, thank you for all the handbook work. Um, all right, eight point six is to approve the twenty twenty-six graduation date.
So, um, actually, Josh, why don't you take this one? Yep, so uh due to, you know, the construction that's gonna be happening in our condensed. Same number of days, but just in a more condensed timeframe schedule. Um, initially, when the calendars calendars were put out. Uh, graduation fell on Saturday Memorial Weekend. And I received some community feedback about. Concerns of graduation happening on such a busy weekend for the community here. Um, and so Chris and I talked and I put a. A poll out, I reached out this summer um to all of the families of graduating twenty twenty-six seniors. And uh brought up this concern and threw out some different options that we can do, that we could potentially do for graduation. So. I threw out three potential dates for graduation and asked people to list them in preference. One of them being Saturday, May twenty-third at one o'clock, which is the original scheduled date. Um, also considering to have it on Friday evening, the twenty-second um at six P M. Or even Thursday, um, May twenty-first at six P M. And uh the reason why that we threw out those dates is because the next week, uh, school's gone. All the kids are done, staff are gone. So to have it um the weekend after, there wouldn't, people wouldn't be here. Um. To have it the weekend before, that really starts cutting into the seniors' minutes and us and days. Because they'd be getting out earlier.
On the days, yeah.
Uh, and so I I threw those, I threw that those dates out and asked for feedback. And the the feedback that I got just on like preference, it was. A very close slight preference for moving it to Friday evening, but not very much. Friday and Saturday. Were the two most popular choices of people who responded. Um, Thursday being kind of by far the least popular choice. Um, I did receive some feedback from people that said, can we consider a different venue um to hold it at um. At a different time if school's out. That I'm just, I'm just trying to be transparent with you all, like feedback that I got. There were some folks who just said that this weekend is not a good time to have it. Full stop, period.
The week before, right?
The basically weekend of Memorial, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, so um, I I don't, I'm not necessarily. Saying I think there's one best situation here. I just, eh, you know.
So the the preference was, what was top choice?
Top choice was Friday evening, but.
Hair.
By a hair.
Twenty-second?
Yeah, twenty-second.
Over Saturday, the twenty-third.
Yes.
And for context, for board members, when I started here, um five, now almost five years ago, um. It was historically on Memorial Day, Saturday. That's that's when it was. And I received. Feedback from community members and their parents that own businesses that demand that. A, they're busy on Saturday of Memorial Day weekend and and B, they want their kid working. They need employees. And so we moved it to the week before Memorial Day, um, or after, after Memorial Day. Like, two years ago, I think, maybe, maybe it was three years ago. Uh, and that was, that was well received. And when I've been around town on Memorial Day weekend, it is truly a busy day on Saturday, Memorial Day weekend. So. You know, to Josh's point, we can't move it earlier a whole week because then we don't have enough instructional days in there for our seniors legally. Um, so with the feedback, I think my recommendation would be to to move it to Friday night, just so that the.
It's obvious.
Able to work on that Saturday. If, you know, if they're working at a restaurant or at a resort or at a whatever, but. Or just leaving on Saturday. It's kind of hard, but.
Seems like there's gonna be also another one of these where I don't know how many people responded of the seniors.
Um, of the families that I reach out to, I had fifteen responses, so.
Less than half.
Yeah.
And now since COVID, we have this like graduation parade and it becomes, I feel like there might be a. Switching it to Friday night, there might be more pushback than you would expect, possibly. I mean, I don't know. I'm basing this on less than half the. Parents responding.
Right.
And families traveling. I think Memorial Day weekend in the past had always been chosen because. Most people have an extra day, so that traveling was easier for grandparents and extended family to visit.
And some of the feedback that I got was that that weekend is prohibited because all the hotels are booked up from tourists.
Very true.
Very true, yeah.
Oh, um, and I mean.
So what do you, are we talking about?
It's currently.
The twenty-third, which is Saturday.
Correct.
We're talking about pushing it to Friday.
Yeah, if you take no action, it's it's scheduled for the twenty-third at one o'clock.
But, okay. So we're not able to avoid Memorial Weekend at all.
Yeah, I don't see how we can.
And this part of this schedule is really different this year. I see Memorial Day as quite early, but it's also the construction.
Yeah, and so this is actually kind of a two-year thing. This would be this coming year and the next year.
Because we have to be out of the building.
Yep.
Along.
By like that Thursday, yeah.
So that even the teachers can get out of the building, so that structure.
Yep, by the twenty-ninth, we are not allowed in the building.
So if we, if we were not doing the construction, when would it be?
The thirtieth.
The thirtieth.
Yeah.
And the last day of school would be June.
Probably, yeah.
Whatever, okay.
Yeah.
Something like that, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
So it's a two-year problem.
Right, so that's, I, right, so it's sort of circumstantial. It's not like. So we gotta kind of like, we're gonna have a lot of these with weird weird little scheduling things across programming. At the school for the next couple of years.
Next two months.
About that earlier today, you know?
Yeah.
Super, like the foot, one football season, we're not gonna be able to be at home.
Yep.
Assuming the next referendum passes, you know, those sorts of things. We're gonna have to like shuffle up and deal with just the reality. For sure. Um, yeah, interesting.
So, I mean, it's, if it's fifteen people, majorities are just pretty small, but but Friday was the.
Friday, Friday eat out Saturday by a hair, yeah.
So it's be like one person.
Probably, yeah, like if one person switches your vote around, it probably, yeah, or two people.
On the one hand, I, you know, part of me is kind of like intrigued by the idea of Friday, just because it's like totally different. And you know, sometimes when you get forced into something different. It's like, sometimes it's not all bad.
Sticks.
You know, I mean, it's like, oh, that was kind of cool because of X, Y, or Z, you know, so I'm not afraid of doing something totally different. And if that sort of alleviates some of the like pressure on the weekend or whatever, you know, maybe. Maybe there's some silver lining there for a couple of years. I don't know.
It gets to me with, I mean, I don't have a kick grails or anything for a long time, so it's not. But I mean, it seems like. On both the people are in the tourist industry are really, really busy on that weekend. I mean, I would rather have it be Friday. Um, let's look around the north, it's probably, but and then uh.
Say it again, Grand North?
Let's look around the north, the bike race. That's why Saturday is so well busy. One other reason, seven hundred people there.
Saturday.
And that's on Saturday.
Yeah. I don't think we have to consider that, but I'm just. But and then, um, but also from like a traveling standpoint, I mean, that still gives you your full. Service, you know, if you have some plans. It doesn't, it doesn't, Friday doesn't particularly ruin your Memorial Day plans.
Right.
But it does make it probably harder for people traveling here for graduation, I guess.
That was a concern shared by a number of families who's hitting here on a Thursday or Friday.
I propose that we don't do anything. I'd like to see. More response from the parents, fifteen out of the entire day of the class. I I would feel much more comfortable if a larger majority were represented.
Yeah.
Whether they have a class meeting amongst the students and go home and talk to their parents. And then readdress it in September-ish once kids have gotten together.
I'll share, there is a number of people who expressed a little bit of urgency with the decision to be made, so.
So they could play for Memorial Day.
Like that, that could happen. I'll I'll just share that as well.
That's still.
So aside from, uh, what's the real, what's the like, aside from a courtesy point of view, like on making the decision? When do we need to make the decision? Why?
For me, like, planning-wise?
January?
I mean, it's, it's, it's fine, if that want to know that. It's. That's, that's the pressing thing here is so families can make appropriate plans for the day.
Sure. Well.
There's parents though that maybe aren't checking school type emails in the summer.
We're ten months out, right, right now. We're ten months out. From May. So it's still quite a ways. I think we should try to make, I mean, I don't disagree with that idea, Carrie, necessarily. It would be kind of nice to have a little bit of a bigger data set.
Um, the survey was sent out in May or.
June.
It was before school got out, wasn't it?
Let me.
Okay.
It was before the last day of school, wasn't it?
No, um.
It, okay, I mean, I think if. What, let's see, if school goes back into session in September.
And you got fifteen total? Josh?
Yeah, it was sent out the end of June, so uh June twenty-third.
A few weeks ago.
Fifteen responses out of how many families?
Um.
Students.
About forty, like, upper thirties.
Forty-ish.
Forty, yeah.
So less than half of students.
Oh, I did, sorry, I did. There was a few more couldn't access the Google form, so it was more like seventeen, eighteen families.
And there were, and if they did, was there anything about like if you don't respond, then you're agreeing that Saturday is just. Or keep it up?
Don't.
Okay.
So is it, it's fair then that half the class maybe just didn't have an opinion?
Even had, they didn't even plead. Because it's after school, it's out anyway, so it's.
So it was sent to student addresses or are there?
Uh, I emailed all of the family, the all the guardians that on record directly. I did not send it to students, I sent it to the families.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Yeah.
I'd like to see the senior class have the opportunity to discuss this.
I mean, at some point, you gotta open your emails, you know, but, um. Yeah, I I would, I think that's not a bad idea, but I think. I I also been sensitive to the idea that we were, a long timeline on that, you know, I mean, I think like another. Attack, the, you know, contact or another to put it out would be good, but I don't see that we should wait too long. Um, especially if you're getting within that group who did respond, you're getting significant. Feedback that they'd like to know soon for planning, I mean.
Well, how many people are giving you that much pressure, you know?
Uh, I mean, there's probably, there was probably, um, there's probably like three or four who. Gave very strong responses that none of those dates were appropriate for graduation. Um, and then I would probably say as a few more than that are, can you please let us know though, because we're trying to make plans.
For sure.
Um, I propose September.
Well, yeah, I mean, if, if we make this, if we took action on this. By the September board meeting, which is September eighteenth. That would give. What? So how many months is that? So eight months, eight months, eight months of notice, which.
And then you're back in.
It will reasonable, I think.
Yeah, people are probably not paying much attention to things coming from the school and some.
In the summertime.
Could you do like an instant alert directed just at like that class's families or something? Somehow like make it a little bit more. Push it at them a little bit or something.
I can certainly, yeah, send it out again. Like, I can maybe, this time I can include students on it. I did not initially, I just sent it to the guardians.
Yeah, and add a variable that's a student or guardian.
Yes.
So you can separate it out.
Separate whose response was what.
Um. What do you, what do you guys think, Rena?
I think that's, I think that's a good idea, I think.
Yeah.
At that, that time, I worked well with, like, people being back in school, but, you know, I I don't. I think it would seem. To me, it would seem. Okay.
Way beyond my daughter.
I feel like it would seem kind of strange to like wait well into the school year to schedule that, you know. I feel like that'd seem kind of strange to, like, wait well into the school year, to schedule that, you know. But I think that, like, very beginning of the school year seems okay to me. That'll be right at hot, hot levy bomb referendum time. It'll be September.
Well, then I just feel more like, if we have the response from the entirety of the class knows and, you know. And that, then I feel more comfortable saying, oh, they want Thursday or they want Friday. Also, like, what's the ninety-ish students tend to be in track? What day of the week is track? Scheduled for, you know, that most of the student body, including a lot of the seniors are gone, or, you know.
Well, it's inconsequential really to us, it doesn't really matter, right? So I hear you, I might as well. The, the people that are most affected by it, kind of let them direct the ship a little bit, because if there isn't any other real pressure or anything on it, like. We're just, it's just sort of arbitrary for us, I guess.
So for Josh's, um, sake, he can tell them that the board intends to address this at the September board meeting?
Yeah.
And it's, and it's seeking a more.
But.
Some representative, like, feedback.
Well, we're, the universe is pretty well defined, though. I mean, for those that are wanting, like, feedback now.
Right.
I mean, it's gonna be.
There's a Friday Saturday.
Thursday, Friday or Saturday.
Right, right, right.
It's not gonna be like the week before or the week after, so we can at least communicate that really clearly right now.
Sure.
Right, that.
Yeah, makes sense.
Because you mentioned that being levy time for just any reason, like, can affect them anything, or just generally that.
Well, I mean, we were hesitant to like dive into the four-day week, uh, conversation because of the politic of wanting to not stir the pot on eleven. So I, I, I think this has the test to be kind of one of those things where it distracts people's attention, but. Depends on how it goes.
I think you guys got to frame it with, you know, the reality is we have to do it on this week, the, is sort of the reality. And we want to do it in a way.
We did do that.
And instead of making it a decision that we're just gonna make unilaterally, we just want to like bring in the, those affected into the fold, you know, and.
Yep.
And we did, and we did all those things.
Right.
We're just.
We're doing it more, right, but I'm just saying, like, as we recommunicated in September, when the, the sort of potential political issue is at play, you know, it's just like.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
So, I think that sounds reasonable, so we'll just not, we're just not gonna take action on this right now.
Action?
Um. Thank you, Josh, for working on this, finding out it, because we don't necessarily have to, so thank you. Um, all right, eight point seven is to approve the twenty twenty-five legislative session model policy updates.
I'll just say, I have a nice date, Balaji's. Yeah, in your packet are, uh, a list of policies, thanks to Katie for working so hard on that. Um, this is all stuff that is the result of, um, legislative action. Thus, we can do it all in one board meeting, one, one vote, as a slate of policies, trying to open up that spreadsheet. There it is. Um, I will share that. Uh, two policies I tweaked a bit from the model policy. The two policies I tweaked are transportation. So seven oh.
Seven oh seven.
It's seven oh seven, seven oh nine, one of the two, um, and then the. Where's the discipline one? Fill in the meals one. Where's the one, oh, the discipline?
Is it the weapons policy or?
Oh, yeah, it was five oh three. It was attendance. Um, and what I did in those two, both of those, is I took out all of the detail, this is the consequence for this. This is the consequence for what, a second bus infraction. I took it all out of the policy and said. Um, discipline for blah, 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 uh, is spelled out and articulated in the. He- student handbook that is approved by the board annually, because we had policy and handbook that were not in alignment. So rather than try to.
Keep them both.
Keep them in alignment, I just refer to the annually approved student handbook for the student attendance policy and the. Transportation policy. Otherwise, it's just boilerplate right out of M S P.
And these are based on changes since testing.
Changing, yeah. Yep.
So I make a motion to approve item point seven, twenty twenty-five legislative, legislative session model policy updates. And red light and updated mo- model policies.
I second. Further discussion?
I just want to say thanks to Kay. She, uh, has been working hard at getting these, uh, more, what's the word? Consistent, so they all look the same, they present the same. So thank you, Kay.
Yeah, I, I appreciated that too. I went through and read all of them, and it was very easy to get through it and see what, whatever everything was, so, for sure. Um, all right, any other discussion? All those in favor?
I.
Those opposed? Motion carries. All right, it's the motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We're verified fifty-nine.
Well, you speak.
Well, I'll just be a little late and miss a portion, hopefully it's not a big deal.